Up there in Beepo for forty foot sailboat somewhere.
Yeah.
I'm not holding my breath on now.
I don't know why they didn't.
For Massachusetts.
Kim Strauss is up, if you get up and beyond that little hammock that sticks out there like.
Yep.
That's a nice, oh, what a beautiful.
Yeah, yeah.
It could really blow when he would be, you'd have that.
I mean, I think you could dredge the hell out of all of that right in front of me.
Yeah.
I mean, I'm kinda glad everyone hasn't got boats lined up in front of me, but.
Right.
I'd like to have mine, yeah.
Like in that back room.
Yeah, well, I mean, even close to his boathouse, I, you know.
Yeah.
That's, I go, I just went back and forth there.
Maybe she would have worked one good.
Two or three hours off the high tide, but.
Yeah.
I think you could probably do that. I mean, I would consider doing that, just putting a deep spot in there sometimes.
Yeah.
Just one spot. And just come in and.
No, no.
I'm hoping I'm gonna get a float out there and just let my power, then I'll just take my thirty foot mooring and stick a forty foot sailboat on it and I'm sure no one will.
Yeah, no, never.
Think about buying that stealing back, so I'd really get people excited, wouldn't it?
Yeah. Alright. We have got five o'clock. I call the meeting to order today, Tuesday, June twentieth, twenty twenty-three. Roll call, we have selectman Howdy Goodwin, Eric Eaton, Mackenzie Jewitt, Kevin Buck, myself, Jamie Thurlow, town manager Jesse Dunbar, and town clerk Dick Katie DeGron. Uh, adoption of agenda, is there anything anybody would like to change? And approval of minutes, we have the minutes from June fifth.
I'll make a motion to approve minutes of June fifth, twenty twenty-three.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the minutes from June fifth, twenty twenty-three. Is there any discussion? All those in favor? Approval of warrants, we have, this is from FY twenty-three, we have warrant one nineteen for eleven thousand five hundred sixty-one dollars and forty-seven cents. One twenty for twenty-five thousand nine hundred fourteen dollars and ten cents. One twenty-one for one thousand two hundred fifty-four dollars. One twenty-two for eleven thousand three hundred ninety-six dollars and eighty-three cents. One twenty-three, thirty-four thousand five hundred eight dollars and twenty-seven cents. One twenty-four for ten thousand three hundred thirteen dollars and eighty-eight cents. One twenty-five for fourteen thousand four hundred twenty-nine dollars and sixty-four cents. And warrant one twenty-six for eight thousand twenty dollars and thirty cents.
Make a motion to approve warrants one nineteen through one twenty-six.
Second. It's been moved and seconded to approve warrants one nineteen through one twenty-six. Is there any discussion? All those in favor? Alright, next we have committee appointments. First thing we have is harbor committee. We can go through each one, correct me if I'm wrong, Jesse, but um, we have one from Larry Albee and Richard Helmke, and that's it for the.
Yep, the two.
The two that are already currently hold a spot.
That are expiring, and Larry Albee holds an at-large seat and like to be reappointed, and Richard Helmke holds the boat storage repair seat and would also like to be reappointed, have not received any new applicants.
I make a motion to appoint Larry Albee to the at-large seat on the harbor committee expiring June thirtieth, twenty twenty-six.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to appoint Larry Albee to the at-large seat on the harbor committee expiring June thirtieth, twenty twenty-six. Is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Make a motion to appoint Richard Helmke to the boat storage repair seat on the harbor committee expiring June thirtieth, twenty twenty-six.
Second. It's been moved and seconded to appoint Richard Helmke to the boat storage and repair seat on the harbor committee expiring June thirtieth, twenty twenty-six. Is there any discussion? All those in favor? Alright, next we have library trustees. We have three seats, and how many of them are reap?
So the, um, three seats expiring were held by Melinda Rice Shun, Rebecca Keith, and Pete Madeira.
Mm-hmm.
Um, Pete is the only one not seeking reappointment. Um, Melinda and Rebecca would both like to be reappointed, and we've additionally received an application from Jane Ashworth.
Do we advertise for all of these?
Yeah.
Is Pete done with all the stuff at the library? He's done such a great job there, they're just, I'm sure they'll do something for him, but he's done, I just wanna make sure he gets recognized, that's all.
Is there any reason we can't appoint them all in one motion?
Nope.
Nope.
I don't think so.
Right.
Get this done.
And he would say, yes, you can, you can.
Make a motion to appoint, here, I lost my place here, Melinda Rice Shun, Rebecca Keith, and Jane Ashworth to the library board of trustees with terms expiring June thirtieth, twenty twenty-six.
Second. It's been moved and seconded to appoint Melinda Rice Shun, uh, Rebecca Keith, and Jane Ashworth to the library board of trustees with term expiring June thirtieth, twenty twenty-six. Is there any discussion? All those in favor? Alright.
Who's next on, I'm not so sure about.
I know. Next, we have the planning board.
Got a load.
I figured that.
We have, uh, one seat that's currently held by, I guess you call him the chairman, Mr. Mark Good, and then we have another seat which is held by Jeff Young that is up for a reappointment, but he's not seeking reappointment.
That is correct.
Okay, so we have no one to fill his vacancy?
So on Friday, Ben Harper, um, said he would like to serve in the seat and he'd have to resign from Board of Appeals, but, um, I don't have an application for him, but. He can fill out and bring him to the next meeting if needed, or he can appoint him at this meeting?
Is he wanting to resign from Board of Appeals?
Yeah, 'cause he asked, you can only be on one, so he would, he would like to serve on the planning board since they're more frequent in the meetings, um, feels he could have a greater impact.
Um, how would the process go though about, how would you, would he have to resign from that before we could appoint him as, uh? I just feel like we should have it in writing.
Yeah, if you want.
Yeah, that we should have him, you know, have it.
Put it on the draw.
Yeah, I think that might be cleaner.
Yeah, if we had a resignation, um, from him and then, uh, and an application for that and then.
Yep.
That way we could appoint someone new for the Board of Appeals.
Yep.
Okay, Mark.
I was just, just gonna urge you guys to, uh, appoint him if there's any way possible without him filling out the application first.
Okay.
Because I know he's interested, so, but.
Well, I just.
It's up to you, yeah, it sounds complicated.
When do you guys have a next meeting? When do you, on planning board?
Yeah.
Next meeting, the planning board?
Yeah.
Uh.
June twenty-seventh.
Next Tuesday, right?
Yep.
Yeah.
There's nothing on the agenda right now.
And, yeah. I'll be gone, but then the first meeting in July, once that, that's when we appoint officers, so.
You'd probably need Ben before our next meeting, right?
What's, what's that?
You probably need Ben appointed before our next meeting though, right?
Yeah.
Could you just say? It'd be nice, I mean, we could get by with four, you know, we've done it before, been shorthanded, but, you know, the sooner the better, as far as I'm concerned.
Uh, looks like we're not gonna schedule our next meeting until the seventeenth.
Yeah.
Right.
And I'm fine, I'm fine with Ben, you know, obviously, I think Ben would do an awesome job, I just wanna make sure it's good on Jesse's side, paperwork side, um, make sure that, you know, it's clear that there's a resignation before, I don't want him doing two positions without a, I wish he would've come to the meeting, we could've filled this, you know.
And we appoint him pending his resignation from the Board of Appeals, or is that?
I think we just make sure that we receive his resignation before he fills out the oath.
Oh, yeah, how about that?
Okay, it's fine with me. If that's clean with you, Jesse, if that sounds, either that or we can, I mean, yeah, I was gonna say, we could do another quick meeting if we had to sometime, but you're.
I mean, it's not unheard of, for instance, if you're on the planning board, you run for a select board, you don't resign from the planning board until you're elected to the select board.
Yep.
Then you resign because you can't hold oath, so.
You just can't serve in a position.
Does, does appointing him automatically have him off the appeals board, so I mean, I suppose that's fine.
Yeah. Yeah, that's fine with me, as long as that's good, and then just do it, um, like you said, pending his resignation from the appeals board. Yeah.
Yeah, I'm fine with that.
Okay, I'll make a motion to appoint Mark Good to the seat on the planning board with term expiring June thirtieth, twenty twenty-six.
Second. It's been moved and seconded to appoint Mark Good to the seat on the planning board with term expiring June thirtieth, twenty twenty-six. Is there any discussion? Sure, Mark, see your last, see your last shot, Mark.
I, I have plenty of comments.
Is he?
Going once, Mark, going twice, quick.
All those in favor? No, thank you for all you do.
Thanks, Mac, yeah.
Yeah.
Um, and then I'll make a motion to appoint Ben Harper to the seat on the planning board with same term expired.
Yeah.
Uh, with term expiring June thirtieth, twenty twenty-six, pending his resignation from the Board of Appeals.
Second. It's been moved and seconded to appoint Ben Harper to a seat on the planning board with term expiring June thirtieth, twenty twenty-six, pending his, um, how did you word that?
Resignation of the Board of Appeals.
His resignation from the Board of Appeals. Is there any discussion? All those in favor? Alright, next we have Board of Appeals. We might have another vacancy there.
Um, so you currently have a seat holder, um, the seats up for reappointment are seat holders Mal Atherton, um, Joey Anharris, and alternate Mike Hayes. Um, Mal Atherton and Mike Hayes are both interested in reappointment, um, Joey Anharris is not, and we've received an application from David Edson.
So you're, we have three seats open, is that including?
Two, two regulars and an alternate.
Okay.
And.
Not including Ben though.
Right, right. Mike currently holds the alternate.
Okay.
And he'd like to be a regular member, not alternate.
I don't think he cares.
Okay.
Either way.
Yeah, I would like, I know, I've known Dave Edson for a bit, he's a really, I think he's a really good guy, I think you'd do an awesome job on that, for sure.
So keep Mike as the alternate then, and appoint the other?
Yeah, I mean, that's.
If Mike doesn't care, you, is that what you said, he doesn't, he doesn't?
Well, I mean, it sounds like there's gonna be a spot for him to be a regular member anyway.
Sure.
Yeah.
As soon as, as soon as Ben resigns, yeah.
Yeah.
So we, I don't know if we could appoint three of them to regular seats until he's actually resigned, yeah.
And he's the alternate, and then he'd serve anyways until, so the seats then.
Exactly, he's an alternate, so he would automatically be going anyway because there's a vacancy.
Yeah.
And then we could just swap it to a full-time when he did that.
Yeah.
I motion to appoint Mal Atherton to the seat on the appeals board expiring at the two thousand twenty-six town meeting.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to appoint Mal Atherton to the seat on the appeals board with term expiring, um, twenty twenty-six town meeting. Is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Uh, I motion to appoint, is it David Edson?
Mm-hmm.
To the seat on the appeals board expiring at the two thousand twenty-six town meeting. Is that what we want? Not the alternate, just put him in another.
Keep Mike as the alternate, and then we can figure out when.
Yeah. Give me a second.
Second.
Oh. It's been moved and seconded to put, uh, David Edson to a seat on the appeals board with term expiring, uh, twenty twenty-six town meeting. Is there any discussion? All those in favor?
I motion to appoint, uh, Michael Hayes to the alternate seat on the appeals board expiring at the two thousand twenty-four town meeting.
Second. It's been moved and seconded to appoint Mike Hayes to the alternate seat on the appeals board, term expiring, uh, twenty twenty-four town meeting. Is there any discussion? All those in favor? And then just to be clear, when we do, um, if we do receive Ben's resignation, then, um, Mike will serve as a regular member until we find someone else that would like to be an alternate, correct?
Yep.
Okay, wanna make sure it is. Alright, now we are on to the Compl Plan Task Force.
So the Comprehensive Plan Task Force, all those seats are expired June thirtieth, um, you've already previously amended the bylaws to extend the, um, task force until December thirty-first. Um, we just need to reappoint the members to December thirty-first, um, to update their term and oath, um, so there's a list of them there, um, I've left. Pete Madeira in the seat of the library trustees, just because he's served the full time in that capacity, um, and I don't think there's any point in getting a new, um, applicant, um, for the library. Additionally, you just appointed Jane to the library, um, board trustees, and she's on Compl as well, so. Either way, the library won't have representation in the remainder of the task force.
Jesse, I don't see Jordan's name.
Jordan, oh, yeah, you're right. Oh, did it go on, no?
Nope, it didn't go on the next page. Jesse.
It's Jordan Wall.
At-large, right?
Yes.
Yeah.
And if it made any difference, the same thing, I know it doesn't, it's just your paperwork part of it, but we could swap Pete Madeira and Jane around to, so one would be at large, one's a, a library. I know it doesn't, they're both on there, so it doesn't matter, but if that would help you out, if you're fine, okay.
Um. Motion wise, if you just wanna do.
As listed? I mean, it's, can, everyone's already on there.
Yeah.
Uh, I'll, let me see if I can come up with something. Make a motion to appoint, uh, the current list of Comprehensive Board Test Force members to. Seats on the Comprehensive Plan Task Force expiring December thirty-first, twenty twenty-three.
Second. Sounded good, Kevin, I don't know if I duplicated it, but it's been moved and seconded to appoint, um, people to the Comprehensive Plan Task Force as listed, um, with, what, no changes to the current, current setup. Is there any discussion? All in favor? Alright, this feels kinda backwards, but now we're at financial reports.
Alright. These reports start as of May thirty-first, which is ninety-two percent of the way through the fiscal year. Under revenues in May, we collected forty-four thousand seven hundred and sixteen dollars in property taxes, bringing total collections to ninety-seven point one nine percent of budget. Uh, we also collected forty-five thousand one hundred and seventeen dollars in motor vehicle excise tax, resulting in total collections of a hundred and eight point four nine percent of what was budgeted, well ahead of pace from all the previous years. Uh, we received eight hundred and fourteen dollars in general assistance reimbursement, twelve hundred and thirty-nine dollars in registration agent fees, seven hundred and seventy dollars in plumbing permits, eight hundred and twelve dollars in building permits. One thousand eight hundred and eighteen dollars in one hundred and seventy-fifth celebration donations, and approximately eight hundred and twenty-one dollars in checking interest. In the war fund, we received four hundred dollars in use fees, a thousand dollars in garage rent. In the harbor fund, we received one thousand six hundred and twenty-nine in boat excise tax and two thousand nine hundred and forty in mooring payments, and in the SEAL CO fund, we received four hundred dollars in use fees. On the expense side, the administration cost center is running at eighty-five percent of the budget. In May, we had expenses of twelve hundred and ten for postage, nine hundred and sixty-four for election supplies, seven hundred and ninety-six for attorney fees, a thousand thirty-eight in repairs and maintenance, including lawn service, multiple cloud beds, water system maintenance, and a repair of the blind pole. The public works cost center, um, is at eighty-seven percent of the budget, um, some notable expenses in May included seven hundred and fourteen in training, sixteen hundred and twenty for Kellytown Road, eight thousand one hundred and thirty-four in winter sand, six thousand one hundred in equipment repairs and maintenance, and included the new lift gate on truck six, six hundred and fifty-two in summer gas, and three hundred and sixty-eight in supplies. Uh, you'll see an expense of twelve thousand eight hundred and four for the Comprehensive Plan and the committee's, um, expense line. There were expenses of one thousand one hundred and eighty-three in the contingency line related to the one hundred and seventy-fifth celebration. In the war fund, we had two thousand five hundred and twelve in war repairs and maintenance, and two hundred and twenty-nine in air terminal boat maintenance. And in the general ledger, we received nineteen thousand nine hundred and thirty in revenue sharing to the state, bringing total receipts throughout the twenty-three, one hundred and forty-six thousand four hundred and twenty-eight, or a hundred and twelve percent of what was budgeted for the year. There are no other significant changes to the general reserves for May, and I have no concerns at this time.
Thank you, Jesse.
I motion to accept the July two thousand twenty-two through May two thousand twenty-three financial reports.
Second. It's been moved and seconded to accept the July twenty twenty-two through May twenty twenty-three financial reports. Is there any discussion? All those in favor? Alright, and now we're on to regular business. Town clerk. I don't, I don't need to discuss this. Jesse?
Yes. Um, so, as you all are well aware, um, Katie is stepping down from her position as town clerk. This is her last full week here, uh, ending on Friday, June twenty-third. Um, as you know, we're all very sad to have Kate leave us, but we're supportive of her decision, um, and very grateful for the job she's done as town clerk. Um, we couldn't have asked for a better town clerk, I don't think. Um, she has graciously agreed to continue on in the role of town clerk for two days a week until we have found a replacement. Um, there's a end of work agreement in your packet, um, legal advice that we just have a written agreement, um, for the terms that were previously discussed, um, for her continued work beyond the end of this week. Um, so that's written up there, um, for your consideration, um, Katie's looked at it, I don't know if you have any comments to add, or?
And if there is any questions, then we should go into executive session on, you know, if there is anything on it, but I wanna thank you for all the hard work you've done and the great job you've, you've done for the town and all your service, you've done amazing job, and I understand what it's like to have a business and you, you have to go tend out, but.
I appreciate it, it wasn't an easy decision.
I know.
Thank you.
Thank you, Katie.
Thank you. I do have a couple of questions about the agreement, so that means executive session.
Okay.
Okay.
Yep, we should, um, do you have, uh? Just hand it to Kevin.
I was gonna say, you should have a member.
Yeah, I probably almost do, except I like to throw in a couple.
You do like to.
I just gotta get in that track. Do you wanna do that now, or?
Do you wanna do it now, or skip over and do it last thing?
Um, if you wanna do it at the end, because it's not.
Yeah.
Okay, I mean, it makes sense, yeah.
We'll just skip over this and, yeah, good idea, Kevin.
Yep.
Skip over this for right the second and, uh, go to the next thing.
Yep.
That sounds good with everybody? Okay, alright, um, next is administrative official appointments. We have our list of one hundred jobs that everybody has.
And Justin's still gonna be officially harbor master for a while?
Uh, yeah, since he's in that supervisory role.
Okay.
Still need to appoint him.
Okay, that's what I was wondering, how long is it?
It's six months.
Okay, yes.
Okay, I'll give you that. I'll make a motion to appoint Jesse Dunbar as the town manager, tax collector, treasurer, general assistance administrator, road commissioner, and to confirm his appointment of the following town officials. Do we need to read everybody, or just as?
I don't think you.
As listed.
As listed.
Yeah, oh, that's easy.
Yeah. Second, second. It's been moved and seconded to appoint Jesse Dunbar as town manager, tax collector, treasurer, general assistance administrator, road commissioner, and to confirm his appointment of the following town officials as listed.
That was the second.
Is there any discussion? All those in favor? Alright, next we have the ice rink shed. I know, I know there's been some, um, some things maybe happening around the, the, uh, ice rink shed that I'm aware of as well, and everybody thought it might be in the best interest of the town to move that for the current time, um, just to deter any activity from happening in there, we'll just say.
Yep.
Looks a lot less expensive than the expansion we talked about a while back there.
Yeah, that's right, tow her over to the.
That's what I was thinking. Put the lawnmowers on there.
Yep.
Something again?
Uh, um, yeah, so there's been three separate incidences, um, that I know of, that happened over there, um, there's no, obviously no monitoring of that site, um, compared to this one, um, and additionally, um, if you proceed with any future use of the block, if you look at that point, um, and Public Works has expressed an interest in putting some tires and then litter current store outside, um, or in the area.
You're thinking right over here on this end of the building?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Somewhere in that area.
Yeah, that makes sense to me.
It's all open on one side, right?
Yeah.
Does that have a floor?
Yep.
So you could close it in pretty easily and.
Yeah.
Make it even better than just tire storage.
Well, one end, but it's got storage on it too.
Yep.
Yeah.
It looks longer than I thought it was, I was wondering if you could get someone like a ramp truck, like Alan, to come grab it and go, but I don't know if you could, it looks like it's sixteen or twenty feet long, it's quite long, that's surprising. Might have to trailer it and mess around that way.
Now, Jack, don't not put it on a flatbed trailer, it wasn't quite that big, but I mean, they're, they don't weigh nearly as much as they look like.
Yep.
Yeah, a ramp truck probably be the way to go.
Yeah.
Yeah, I've had them do that before, and just put a couple rollers on it, roll it on, roll it off, and done.
I motion to authorize the former ice rink shed to be moved to the town office lot to a location deemed appropriate by the town manager.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to authorize the former ice rink shed to be moved to the town office lot to be located, uh, deemed appropriate by the town manager. Is there any discussion? All those in favor? Alright, next we have the Hancock County Planning Commission.
So I was contacted by the Hancock County Planning Commission asking us to confirm our representatives on the HPC, HCPC board, um, this is the full board that meets annually, um, the town's current appointments are Chris Eaton and Dana Reed. We're allowed two regular appointments and an alternate, and the alternate is currently, um, vacant, so it's up to the select board to appoint representatives to the board.
Kinda guessing Dana doesn't want to get reappointed, and I've kinda guessed Chris probably doesn't.
I would, but, he probably doesn't remember that he's on there.
Yeah, it's kinda.
He might want to, I don't.
Yeah. Have you talked to either one of them?
No. I believe, um, it was, uh, obviously town manager and select board, um.
Hundred years ago, yep.
Chris hasn't, Chris hasn't been on the select board for seven years.
Yeah.
Sounds like Kevin and Jesse, huh?
No, I, I think Eaton, I think there's definitely.
Yeah, that's what, yeah.
Yeah, we just scroll out your last name.
That's a good, that's actually a good idea.
Yeah, I think that's one of those sovereignty positions.
Yeah. Scratch a first name, I wanna know the difference, there you go, Eric.
What does that board even do, huh?
Alright, so, we have to name two people.
At least two.
Sure.
And it's once a year?
Yeah, they meet once a year, so it was an annual meeting that everybody can go to.
Let's draw straws.
So you'd love to do it?
I'm, I'm fine being once a year.
Yeah.
Okay, pick Jesse.
Yeah, there's one, but. The select board representative. Pick straws, yeah.
Yep.
How do you look like, yeah?
No, no, I don't care, pick straws.
Yeah. Yeah.
Hell, the only one I have heard from is Mackenzie, though.
Nope.
I'll do it the fair way, I'll put everybody's name in Eric's hat, so I'm on the board. Howdy, what do you think?
It sounds like that's the way we're doing it.
Eric, get down your hat.
God, we're like in kindergarten.
You can leave mine off if you want.
And I would put my name in once.
Howdy, howdy, howdy.
Wait, if Chris was the chair of the board, then doesn't it make you?
People are gonna be like, is this serious, they're really throwing it?
It's all on camera.
Yeah, I know, don't worry. Okay.
It's the first time for everything.
Jane? Come on up.
Okay, I don't like being mad.
It's okay, we already know it's gonna be Howdy.
Yeah, we, we've got, they all say Howdy, so you're good.
My driveway, you know, in the winter.
Yeah. Is it Eric? Look at that, Eric! That was fair, that was fair square.
See, I told you it was a sovereignty position.
Yeah, I should've said, don't put my name in there five times.
You might wanna see how many Eric's you put in.
Yeah.
On both sides, yeah.
Do you need motions before we?
Yeah, we.
Before we mess it up again? Uh, where are we, Hancock County? Um, I'm gonna do Eric first.
Jesse, yeah, definitely do Eric first.
I'll make a motion to appoint Eric Eaton to the?
Seat.
Regular seat, at, on the Hancock County Planning Commission Board.
Second, I guess.
It's been moved and seconded to appoint Eric Eaton to the seat on the Hancock County Planning Commission Board. Is there any discussion? All those in favor?
And I'll make a motion to appoint Jesse Dunbar to the seat on the Hancock County Planning Commission Board.
Yeah, real funny.
Go out to dinner, huh?
It's been moved and seconded to appoint Jesse Dunbar to the seat on the Hancock County Planning Commission Board. Is there any discussion? All those in favor?
And we can leave the alternate open for now.
Yeah, clearly we've never eaten.
I can't make that meeting.
All right. You wanna do, we'll do the town manager's report, too, then we'll do that last, right? Town managers' report.
All right. Over the last two weeks, uh, I conducted the town's safety committee meeting, typed the lead of town minutes, uh, coordinated the fire alarm panel replacement, attended a Zoom meeting, um, regarding DAW Qua, met with, um, Johanna from Climate Drive and Kevin regarding the next community resilient partnership grant. I had a meeting with, uh, Maine Municipal Association for Workers Comp, uh, Review, prepared the financial reports, attended Zoom meeting with, uh, Mission Broadband, attended the Broadband Committee meeting, meeting prep, um, conducted the two-month evaluation of the Harbor Master, and set up for the Compl meeting. Uh, office staff is busy, uh, filing liens, attending the safety committee meeting, uh, doing BNB reports and updates on the town's new website. The, uh, which did launch.
Looks great.
Uh, Public Works, uh, put up radar sign, uh, installed a new sign at the town dock, changed oil in the Bobcat, checked roads, uh, straightened the sidewalk sign about the school, installed the Norwood Cemetery sign, removed trash at Hill Rust, and, uh, removed a trash can from the ferry terminal float to the, up here. Um, mowed the town office, trimmed Norwood Cemetery, uh, lawn repair from plowing damage on Fanning Road, um, finished cleaning up the upstairs at the Public Works Garage, uh, put out a new trash can ahead of Harbor, attempted to do postholds for the new school, um, flashing signs.
A template?
Unsuccessful, but, um, attempt to do that thing.
Try again?
Uh, the John Deere, um, had trouble starting the day to replace the batteries and, um, put up the trash can at Back Beach. Harbor Master was, um, busy entering morgue permits, um, moving some gear around, clean up with the dock, spoke, um, with Public Works and some contractors regarding possible improvements out in Seal Co., attended the DAW Qua meeting, um, had some phone calls regarding a floating dinghy that was found in Harbor, dealing with, um, complaint regarding two boats hitting each other on board, and phone calls regarding traps on the wharf, and checking on boats tied to the wharf. Over the next few weeks, I am going to begin preparations for the end of the fiscal year on June thirtieth. Um, the office will be closing it too that day to conduct the end of the year processes, and conduct the, the search for the new town clerk.
Ready to put out a, uh, advertisement?
Yep.
Any hits?
We've had a couple, I can start, you know?
All right, um, suggestions for the next meeting? Date of the next meeting?
I'll make a motion to confirm the date of the next meeting from Monday, July seventeenth, twenty twenty-three, at, by the town office.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to confirm the date of the next meeting from Monday, July seventeenth, twenty twenty-three, five P M. at the town office. Is there any discussion? All those in favor? All right, now we have an executive session entitled Personnel Matters.
I make a motion, let's see if I found my, the right place here. To find a public discussion of these personnel matters could be reasonably expected to cause damage to the employee's reputation and/or to violate the employee's rights to privacy, and therefore to go into executive session to discuss the employment, appointment, assignment, duties, promotion, demotion, compensation, evaluation, disciplining, resignation, and/or dismissal of if of an individual, a group of public officials, appointees, or employees as permitted by one M R S A four oh five dot six dot A.
Second.
Been moved and seconded to go into executive session, title Personnel Matters, as read by Kevin. Is there any discussion? All those in favor? Are you a new reporter for The Islander?
For what?
For The Islander.
Ah, quite, I'm a girl.
Oh, okay, all right, yep.
Um, executive session is up, and I gotta get out of here?
Yes, yep. Okay, we are out of executive session at six oh one. We'll go back to, um, our last thing, which was the regular business of town clerk that we had touched on earlier.
Um, I make a motion to sign the end-of-work agreement with Katie DeAndrea, uh, between Katie DeAndrea and the town of Tremont as amended.
Second.
Been moved and seconded to approve and sign the end-of-work agreement between Katie DeAndrea and the town of Tremont dated June twentieth, twenty twenty-three, to thank her for her service.
Absolutely.
As a town clerk of the town of Tremont, um, as amended. Is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Thank you, guys.
Anything you, Katie? Uh, motion to adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor?
I guess this is no longer confidential.